No need for a gavel. Hello, welcome. I would like to call the closed session meeting to order for the February 27th, 2018. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that Councilman Muldoon is currently not in attendance, but he is on his way.
All right. Are there any public comments on agenda or non-agenda items? Please come forward. Seeing none, closed session, Mr. Harp.
Thank you very much. The City Council were adjourned to closed session to discuss items 3A through D, including meeting with the City Manager Dave Kiff, Assistant City Manager Carol Jacobs, Human Resources Director Barbara Salvini, and Peter Brown to discuss labor negotiations with the unions listed under Agenda Item Number 4A. The Council will also meet with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation by the unions and individuals listed under Agenda Item Number 4B, and that's related to the Flores versus the City of San Gabriel decision. The Council will meet with legal counsel, discuss two pending litigation matters entitled Orange County Museum of Art versus the City of Newport Beach, and Susan Skinner versus the City of Newport Beach. And finally, the Council will meet to discuss the claim listed on the agenda filed by Ms. Leonie Mulvaughlin on June 15th, 2017. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harp. We are now recessed until the 7:00 regular meeting.
And I'll be recusing myself from the claim item.
Thank you all for coming. I'd like to call the meeting to order for the February 27th, 2018, regular meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Mr. Harp, is there a closed session report?
Yes, there is a closed session report this evening. In regards to the litigation entitled Orange County Museum of Art versus the City of Newport Beach, and Susan Skinner versus the City of Newport Beach, the City Council approved a settlement agreement that provides for the settlement of both matters. This settlement is contingent upon Nexus Development Corporation, Central Division, purchasing the property at 850 and 856 San Clemente Drive from OCMA. Assuming that that sale goes through by June 30th, 2018, Line in the Sand will request that its pending appeal be withdrawn, and similarly, Susan Skinner will request her lawsuit be dismissed. As consideration for the lawsuits and settlement, Line in the Sand will receive a payment of $205,000, and the City will receive approximately $40,000. The settlement agreement will be made available to the public once it's fully executed. Thank you. Oh, and one more thing, the vote was unanimous on that.
Thank you, Mr. Harp. We will now have the invocation by Councilmember Hurdman, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance from Councilmember Piattar.
Please join me. Bow your heads. Dear Lord, we pray to you this evening for wisdom and guidance in the decision-making process. May we glorify you in all that we do. We pray these things in your son's name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, and justice for all. All right. We have a fun event here, which is very nice. Since we're a surfing water town, I'd like to have our Assistant Chief, Rob Williams, please come up and give us a...
Good evening, Mayor Duffield and councilmembers. My name is Brian O'Rourke, and I'm a lifeguard captain. I'm also the junior guard coordinator. It's an honor to be up here with Chief Williams this evening to honor our 2017 Junior Guard of the Year, Jax Richards. It's been a little bit of a tradition over the years that we recognize our junior guard from last year as it coincides with the start of our lifeguard tryouts this weekend and junior guard swim tests that start this weekend. And I know some of you might be coming, and you're obviously invited, and we look forward to seeing you and being down there. So with that, I'm going to introduce you. Here's Jax Richards, just an outstanding young person, very humble and incredible waterman. I feel pretty jealous when I see him out in the water here. And he's going to probably be a future leader here in our city. So with that, I'll pass it off to you, Mayor Duffield.
Thank you. I'm going to now read this proclamation, and it's quite something. Whereas Jax Richards was selected as the 2017 Junior Lifeguard of the Year for exemplifying the values of the junior lifeguard program, and whereas Jax excelled in the various academic aspects of the program, showed excellence in the rigorous physical events, and encouraged others to give 100 percent. Jax was always early and was always ready to get in the water, and whereas Jax provided inspiration for his fellow junior lifeguards and instructor staff. He is an excellent waterman, strong surfer, freediver, and ocean competitor. As a strong finisher in junior lifeguard competitions, Jax always demonstrated outstanding sportsmanship. Win or lose, and even disappointed sometimes, Jax accepted decisions with grace by shaking hands and congratulating his fellow competitors. He leads by example, is very humble, and is always polite. Jax has always the -- all the characteristics of an exemplary Newport Beach junior lifeguard. Now, therefore, I Duffy Duffield, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby commend Jax Richards for being the 2017 Junior Lifeguard of the Year. So we're going to... Go ahead. Want to say something?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Duffield. Just a couple more acknowledgements. We have an award here from the Fire Chief, Chip Duncan, in the Newport Beach Fire Department, stating Jax Richards is our 2017 Junior Guard of the Year. So this is for you. And also, we have a check from -- for $250 from the California State Life Saving Association. Jax was voted the number-one junior lifeguard in the state of California. So we're very... Yeah. Yeah. So we're very proud of you. Also, just a side note here, Jax is going to try out for lifeguards this weekend. So he's gone from seven years in the program, and now he's going to come work with us. And we know there's going to be great things, and we're very proud of you. So congratulations, Jax. So without further ado.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council, Newport Beach lifeguards, JG instructors, family and friends. Thank you for this amazing award and opportunity. My name is Jax Richards. I'm 16 years old. I attend Newport Harbor High School, live down the peninsula, and I was in the JG program for the last seven years. I'm on the Newport Harbor High School surf team, and I'm in the ocean several times a day. I've always been intrigued by the ocean since I was a little kid. The weather swells and waves of the ocean never gets old. Surf forecasting, both good and bad waves, never upsets me. But my love for the ocean truly began when I started JGs at nine years old. From competition days to monster mile, I became more comfortable in the ocean. Every instructor was enthusiastic and encouraging each day of guards. I always felt safe and confident with their guidance. In addition to teaching me how to be safe and love the water, this program has taught me important life skills like fitness, manners, communication skills, and more. These guys are the heroes of my community, and I fully look up to them. In return, I hope to do exactly the same thing for the future in my community. My dream is to be able to work around the ocean, and this program has motivated me to try out to become a lifeguard this year. Thank you again for this honor.
I had one question for... How many junior lifeguards are there total every year?
It really depends year by year, but we're averaging about 1,300 to 1,400, somewhere in between there. So last year, we were about 1,330. So yeah, huge program.
So 1,300, he's the number-one guy.
For one. And out of the state of California.
8,000 in the state.
Wow. 8,000 in the state. Well, I would like to ask Jax for just a little of his hair. But other than that, we're very proud of you. Let's get some pictures by the way.
Let's take one more. Perfect. Notice to the public, the City provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the City Council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in silent mode.
All right. We'll now have time for City Council announcements. These are non-discussion items. On new items, City Council members would like to be introduced for future agendas. Mr. Avery.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have some really good news. The City recently received a grant from the Orange County Transportation Authority for approximately $2.4 million for the construction of a pedestrian bridge and bicycle bridge over Superior Avenue at Pacific Coast Highway. That's a... It's pretty exciting because it's much more than a bridge. It's making that Sunset Ridge Park really much more accessible to many, many more people. So this proposed bridge will connect the current Sunset View Park area and the new Sunset Ridge Park, in addition, improve access, further enhance safety of pedestrians, cyclists, vehicles by removing the need to cross Superior at the street level. Public Works and Recreation Staff will soon be working with West Newport Community to refine this concept for the bridge, as well as additional parking in another pedestrian bridge to cross PCH ultimately. So this exciting community project will enhance access to the beach and the popular parks, create a low-stress crossing for pedestrians, and I would also say motorists and cyclists above these two busy roadways, which I think we're all familiar with, and it is... It's a lot to get across sometimes. I would also like just to point out that these things just don't fall in the City's lap, and all of us up here on the dais know that. There's a lot of work behind the scenes from Public Works, City Manager, all of it. It's just took time and effort working with the various agencies to get this tremendous grant to help our city. And in particular, I'd like just to highlight Brad Summers of Public Works, who has really did the heavy lifting and just moving it forward, keeping on it the whole time. And so I think when that bridge is built, he can look at it with a great deal of pride that he had so much to do with it, pushing it forward. But also just the support from this city, another indication of the city working together for the greater public good. And also, I'd finally like to say that Tony Petros, my predecessor behind the scenes, worked on this as well. So this is before my time, and I think it's good to recognize that. Another item, I'd just like to make people aware that on Wednesday, March 14th, so a little more than two weeks from now, at 7:00 PM, I will be hosting along with the Public Works staff and engineering, our next community meeting for the traffic study in Newport Heights, which is going to be a real move forward, I think, ultimately to delivering a safer neighborhood up there. And so the meeting will review the field data collected during this study, and discuss some preliminary recommendations and possible next steps, and also, very importantly, to get more citizen input. We had a meeting a couple of months ago, and we really had a constructive meeting, getting some really good ideas from the people that live in that community. And I think ultimately, the combination of the City input and the effort of the study, but also the very important input from residents, will bring us some real results in the neighborhood. And we don't have a meeting place announced yet, but I will work to get that out there as soon as possible, and I'll have another shot to announce this, I think, the Tuesday preceding February 14th. So thank you. And finally, I would just like to say, with the mayor, I attended the groundbreaking of the Environmental Nature Center's new preschool campus consisting of three classrooms and offices and support spaces. And this has been another thing that's been a long time coming, but basically, the board and everybody connected at the Environmental Nature Center got this going, and this is with private money, and there might be some grants in there. But just another example of the leadership and the people involved at the Environmental Nature Center, providing this wonderful new center to the children in our community and from outside of our community. And it's just a wonderful addition to this special place that the mayor may be able to talk about a little bit, because he has some personal experience there from a few years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Avery. Great report. Councilman Piattar.
Yeah, I'd like to have something brought back as an agenda item, is whether or not the Council should support AB 1394. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of items. I just want to give an enthusiastic shout-out to Public Works for the Superior Bridge project on both crossing Superior Avenue and Coast Highway. The folks in my district, one, who live in West Newport, have been passionately and enthusiastically wanting that... wanting progress on that, and I'm just delighted. Thank you. And I've said many times publicly that so much of our capital program is funded through grants, and they just don't drop in our lap. We have to aggressively go after that, and we have talented folks in our Public Works Department that seem to know the magic words that get these grants back. So our taxpayer dollars at work, what goes out comes back in spades, and that's fantastic. Congratulations, Dave. A couple of items that I want to just bring forward, as they've been trailing here now, to speak a little bit on the Legislative Policy Committee. I believe that having a Legislative Policy Committee spend time reviewing our legislative... Oh. I can't do that.
Point of order, please.
Oh.
That's the next agenda item.
Oh, I thought you said for future agenda item.
Oh, for future.
Oh. Well, it's still pending.
So you're on to the Council announcements.
It's after Council announcements.
Okay. I misunderstood. My apologies. Back to order.
And I have no other announcements.
All right. Thank you. Next up is Councilman Hurdman.
Yeah, I have a few things to announce. I serve as the regular attendee at the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Meeting. I attend each month and give them an update on the work of the Council. So I attended that meeting this last... Actually, a week ago. Babo Island is really the epicenter of my district, and they have annual membership meetings of the Babo Island Improvement Association and the Little Babo Island Property Owners Association. They had such a meeting two Saturdays ago, and I attended, and it's a great opportunity for me to report to my constituents and give them an update also on what's taking place in the city. I'm also a commissioner on the Airport Land Use Commission, so I attended that meeting this month. I was able to attend... Our mayor, Duffield, was unable to attend a mayor's breakfast that was hosted by Supervisor Steele just this last week, and then I also attended along with Councilman Piattar the National Prayer Breakfast that was held for electeds. And then, speaking of bridges, I had the pleasure of attending the American Society of Civil Engineers Annual Awards Dinner on February 15th with City Engineer Mark Vakoyevich, Director Dave Webb, and Zach Gentry, who are pictured on the screen there, along with me in the picture. Fong Si, another of our civil engineers in the city, unfortunately was not able to attend because of health reasons, but he was a very important part of this project. The award received by the City was for the Little Island Bridge Project. The City calls it the Park Avenue Bridge. I call it the Little Island Bridge, one of 17 awards that were given across Orange County. The bridge project was selected for award in the construction category and was recognized for the outstanding and complex construction that this project presented. The project team developed a context-sensitive replacement approach in close coordination with island residences and businesses. Dave and his team were out two years before this project was even implemented, meeting with the residents and business owners, and trying to incorporate everything that they were asking for in this replacement bridge. The bridge received the Construction Project of the Year Award, the plaque for which is also displayed on the screen. So congratulations to an outstanding... for an outstanding job done, and to a most deserving team of people who work for our city. Good job. Just... And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Muldoon.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to also offer congratulations and thank you to our City, mostly Chief John Lewis and the Police Department. You may have read that despite the trend statewide for property crimes increasing, they have actually decreased here in Newport Beach. Part of this is a result of early release program, Prop 47 and Prop 57, but our department has successfully led an educational campaign to remind individuals, you have to lock your car and home doors in order to deter robbers from community property crimes in our communities. Just wanted to say congratulations, and thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Mayor Protem O'Neil.
Sure. Yes... Let's see. Was it yesterday? Councilmember Muldoon and I went over and toured the University of California Irvine. It's called The Cove, and it's a really fascinating program, celebrating entrepreneurship and putting students, PhDs, and entrepreneurs out in the community together with one another, and then hopefully investors, and then hopefully changing the world. And really fantastic. So I just wanted to say publicly, thank you for that tour. The witty lectures continue this Friday, Saturday. David Edelman is speaking, as always, the Newport Beach Library Foundation, and the sponsors are doing a fantastic job attracting really great speakers. So I encourage you all to go out. Saturday morning, March 3rd, lifeguard tryouts, daylight savings time, March 11th, don't forget. And then, one quick congratulations to the Newport Harbor High School Girls Water Polo Team. They went up and beat Santa Barbara for the CIF Southern Section Division Two Championships on a last-second goal by team captain Jessica Lynch. Really fantastic. We were going to... I think we plan on extending an invitation to them to come and receive a certificate of recognition from the Council at our next meeting. So anyway, congratulations. That's fantastic.
Thank you. I just would comment real quickly on the Environmental Nature Learning Center. You'll hear more about it when it's completed. This was the groundbreaking, so they've got a long way to go, and they still need your donations, so hopefully if you can do that, that would help a lot. So I will... I'll get more involved in that as the project gets down the road, but it's an awesome project. All right. Now we move on to three items that the councilmen have wanted to bring back, and we're going to try for a vote on each one, and there'll be no discussion on this. The first one is whether to reestablish a City Council Legislative Committee to assist staff in implementing the City's legislative efforts, both in Sacramento and Washington, DC. And Councilwoman Dixon brought this up. So I would like to... Show of hands.
I don't need to say anything.
You're not supposed to say anything.
Correct. When the item comes back, you...
Just a brand.
Yeah. It's just to put it on a future agenda.
So please vote.
Officially.
Show of hands. One, two...
For five. Five of seven.
Okay. Next one.
Mayor Duffield?
Yes.
I wish to pull this item, the next one.
All right. Item two, Councilman Hurdman has asked to pull. And item three is whether to take a formal position in support of Cal Chief's proposal... proposed ballot measure known as the Reducing Crime and Keeping California Safe Act 2018. Councilman Muldoon. Great. Yes, if you have a new item.
Do I say that?
Sure.
Okay. Like to bring this forward, if possible, ask the City Manager. We've spoken about this, about bringing an update back to us on the Port Master Plan Bill. It's now in the form of legislation, which is all good, including the advocacy package, the legislative strategy, budget, and actions to date. And I understand you could do this at the next meeting, March 13th. I'm supportive of the direction and concept, don't get me wrong. It's really exciting and important at the same time that we understand what we're getting into, and this is all in the context of...
Okay.
Is that enough?
That's it.
Okay. My time's up. Anyway, so please bring it back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Public comments on consent calendar. This is the time in which councilmembers may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 10. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Councilmembers have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Avery.
None.
Mr. Piattar.
None.
And Councilwoman Dixon.
None.
Councilman Hurdman.
None.
Councilman Muldoon.
None.
Mayor Protem O'Neil.
I only lodge a conflict on number six due to real property interest.
And I have none.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I move the balance of the consent calendar with number six. My... How do I phrase it? Aaron?
Abstaining.
Oh, recusal. Thank you. Recusal due to conflict on real property interest.
I'll second. All right. Let's vote.
Public comments, Mayor.
Excuse me. All right. Are there any public comments? Please come up.
Mayor Duffield and members of the Council, my name is Jim Mosher, and if you will indulge me, I actually did not want to comment on a specific item on tonight's consent calendar, but I wanted to comment about a problem with the consent calendar and how we handle it, and a possible solution for that. The problem I wanted to bring your attention to, if you paid attention to what the clerk just read, the public reading the agenda is informed that the consent calendar consists of routine items that are going to be enacted in a single motion in the form listed below. At your last meeting, people in good faith relying on that thought that the Council was going to adopt a resolution calling for the City staff to work on the general plan update during the current year, current calendar year, and to their surprise... during the current year, current calendar year, and to their surprise, because they did not here, come here to comment, or if you had any input on that, the council did something that was not the routine matter, and it was not enacted in the form that the public was told it was going to be enacted in, and in fact, the city staff was told not to work on the general plan update during the current calendar year. The solution I would suggest to you is that this council consider adopting a policy consistent with what it says here in the words that the clerk reads, namely, if you're going to adopt something, it will be in the form that is listed here, and the discussion, if you pull an item, should be confined to whether you are going to adopt it in that form or not. If you want to suggest something substantially different, the action should be to bring that item back at the next meeting so that the public has noticed that there is going to be a discussion of it, and it is indeed not a routine item. That is my suggestion, and I hope you will act on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
Hi, I'm Matt Wiley. Live at 409 Colton Street. I'm here on item number 13, which is the Newport L. Project, and like all good projects, this was hatched about nine years ago.
Mr. Wiley?
Yes, ma'am.
That item isn't part of consent calendar?
I'm really...
Items one through 10, yes, sir.
Sit down. Okay.
Thanks. Are there any other speakers on the consent calendar items, please?
I'm sorry, I'm hard of hearing. Did you say public's comment yet?
Um, no.
Or not yet?
No, not yet.
Sorry. Okay.
Okay. So, one last time, any other speakers on the consent calendar? Seeing none? Let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for item three, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach, adding chapter 1.26 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code relating to electronic and paperless filing of fair political practices commissioned campaign disclosure statements. Councilmembers Hurdman and Muldoon?
Okay, we'll give you thumbs up.
I think absent-minded is accurate, but absent, I'm here in the flesh.
Your thumbs up. Okay, motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
Ready? Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items, generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Are there any public comments on non-agenda items? Here we go. Thank you for...
I've been here a few times, but I forgot the order. And congratulations to your wonderful young lifeguard. That's, I was a lifeguard on the Atlantic Ocean. Yes, there are sharks out there. Yes, the riptides. It's amazing what they do, and to be first in the state, that's really something. So, tonight I'm here to talk, I lost my voice because I've been in court all day, trying to get a restraining order against someone who is running for city council in Costa Mesa.
You state your name, excuse me.
And the reason I'm here tonight is this, this was sent, this is, you were just in a meeting with Michelle Steele, right? Well, this was sent around to some Newport and Costa Mesa people, and the reason I'm here tonight is, when I went to court today, I was shocked to see that the person I was dealing with is represented by Zacky Burns, who is the law firm that is representing Dr. Honey of Yellowstone Recovery, which sued the city of Costa Mesa, is suing the city of Costa Mesa, formally sued the city of Newport Beach, and was surrounded by people from the recovery community. I was shocked to see all of this, to be honest with you. The reason I'm here tonight is I believe, and I talked to your former councilman, Mr. Curry, about this when he was mayor, I think that Newport Beach and Costa Mesa need to get together on the issue of sober living in the recovery community in our cities, because what is going on in Costa Mesa is also affecting the crime in your city, and our city does not have a handle on this at all, at all. They've let it go, it's completely out of control, and if you can do anything to put pressure on our city to get a handle on this, or if you could work with the people, you had Morn, the group that got together in Newport and did something about this, but before you check your boxes, this coming election, don't just check Republican or just check Democrat. Find out where a lot of their campaign money is coming from, and find out if it involves sober living, not the good recovery homes, that's one thing. It's the dark money, the bad recovery homes, the kids are dying, you all know it, it's out of control, so please, could we get the cities to work together on this thing?
May I interrupt, ma'am? Could you please state your name, just for the record? Sorry.
Do I have to?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on non-agenda items? Please come up.
Hi. I've not come to a Newport Beach council meeting before.
You state your name.
I'd rather not.
Okay.
I, just to support the prior speaker, our two cities do border one another, Newport Beach and Costa Mesa. A lot of the issues from my city, I live right on, I live right on the border, and I shop a lot in Newport Beach along with Costa Mesa, so what she's talking about, it does spill over into your community, and I know that many of you may not see it, I don't know where you socialize, but the recovery industry in our city is out of control, and we're not getting a lot of the respect and the responses from our current council members to really take a position in moving forward. Some are, some aren't, but I do think that if a collaborated effort with your city, partnering with ours, could really make an impact. I do believe that there is crime impacting both of our cities. I do believe that the heroin running through the streets is impacting all of the kids in all of the schools, not just the schools in Costa Mesa, but also in Newport Beach. And I, I would really think that your collective association and collaboration could really help this, this ongoing situation, and I'm just here to kind of speak about it. I've spoken about it at our city council meeting, I've spoken about it on social media. There is an element of intimidation. I have been a recipient of lawsuit threats for speaking up. There's many other types of unsavory behavior that happens if you happen to be a resident taking a position on this issue, so I really have to commend this prior speaker because she's really gone above board to try to educate and inform people, and I would invite you all to sit down and have some frank conversation with her, and you'll really learn what's really going on. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, are there any other comments on non-agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on to oral reports from city council on committee activities. Mr. Avery?
None.
Mr. Piattar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was talking to Chief Lewis earlier regarding, a couple of emails that have come up regarding school safety, and I was wondering if now would be maybe an appropriate time for him to give a short report on some of the things that the police department's doing in regards to school safety.
Any objections up here? I see none.
He said he had a short report.
All right.
He's not short, but the report is.
Thank you, Mayor Duffield, members of city council. I'm John Lewis, your chief of police, and yes, that is correct, I am shorter than Councilmember Piattar. I have a, in light of what had happened in Florida, we've received a number of just inquiries about concerned parents, you know, throughout our high school and our, our school community about what we're doing here as a, as a police department and a community to address safety and really create a culture of safety in our, in our school communities. And this is something that I'd just like to explore a little bit with you tonight, and I'm also open to questions, that anything I bring up in more detail to, to explore further, or, you know, perhaps even a study session, if, if you would like to do that. The first thing I want to talk about is our school resource officer program, and we've been fortunate in this community for many, many years with the support of Newport Mesa and with the support of our city council here, to be able to have full-time, uniformed police officer presence on our, at our high school campuses, both Newport Harbor and Coron del Mar. And really what these, what these campus police officers do, or school resource officers do, it allows us to have a visible deterrent. We're talking about police officers here with marked police vehicles that are on our campuses on a regular basis, and they are part of the, the school community here. They provide protection for our people on campus, and not just the campus itself. We also participate in sporting events, football games, dances, school-sponsored events as well. Part of their mission is to train our folks on responses, should one of these incidents occur in your campus, and we do that with, with not just students, but with staff, volunteers. We also conduct individual assessments on the school sites, but then to the unique classrooms and unique classroom environments that comprise some of our campus communities, and those are times that we will spend with, with teachers, with their classroom, with their special considerations or concerns there. Those are all things that we, that we work through at the sites. But I think it's important to point out too, that it's not just our school resource officers that are responsible for our campus safety, we as a police department and as a city, it's more than just leaving these individuals here on the campuses to, to take care of these concerns. We also spend a considerable amount of time with our traffic enforcement and preventative patrol around our school sites, and I went and looked at the Newport Harbor area, we looked at the beginning of school, some traffic concerns that we had over in the Newport Heights area, and with Newport Harbor High School as well, and I looked at what our numbers were, just to get an idea about how we did at the beginning of the school year, and I looked from September 5th to October 18th, and our folks had issued 153 citations, 42 warnings in and around these schools that are all in close proximity in Newport, Newport Heights area. This is the daily presence of our motor officers that are out there to support our, our school resource officers. So again, while we may be doing traffic enforcement, and our emphasis here is on, on traffic safety and getting folks to pick up and drop off safely, there's also the added component of, of the visible deterrent, again, of uniformed police officers being at our school sites on a regular basis. We even use our parking control officers to be there and patrol and do enforcement in those areas for, again, additional presence to the, to the schools themselves. And one thing that's interesting for us to note is, we all remember the DARE program, and that was one of those programs that was in all the elementary schools, and had, a lot of cities had, had gone away from it. We have maintained what I believe is a stepped-up version of the DARE program on our elementary school campuses, where we have a police employee, crime prevention specialist, that is there on our school campuses on a regular basis with our step-up program, where we talk about substance abuse, but we also talk about bullying and staying safe online. Two more things I want to, because I promised this was going to be quick. Our teen academy and our explorer program, these are youth programs that we have an opportunity to really get in front of our kids, too, and again, go over these lessons and, and talk about education prevention and approach it in those atmospheres as well. And also our mentor programs, we have a number of our folks across all levels of rank that participate in our high school communities as mentors, so it's not unusual for our folks to, to be on campus in, in those types of capacities here, so that's a big 30,000-foot sketch of what we're doing for our schools, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
We're not going to do that right now, thank you, but Chief Lewis, thank you very much for that.
Yeah, thank you for indulging me. I thought it was just, it would be good for the public to hear how proactive we are on this.
That's great. That was awesome. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Dixon?
I have none.
Mr. Hurdman? None. Mayor Protem O'Neil?
None, thank you.
And I have none. All right, we're going to move on to our item 11, the non-exclusive solid waste franchises.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, you've been through this drill before. Mike is here for a presentation, if you want one. If you don't, you just open the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move staff approval on this, so we have a motion on the floor before the public hearing.
And I'll second it.
Well, any discussion up here? Diane?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Quick question, Mike and/or Dave, when we've discussed this in prior public meetings, we've talked about an incentive program for the small haulers who have not yet invested in clean vehicles, clean natural gas vehicles. Are we still working on that, just so it's clear, on these contracts that there is a period of time, I believe 10 years, for them, the haulers who do not have clean natural gas facilities to comply with that program? Are we working on that?
Yes, we're still looking into that and seeing how we can implement that.
All right, but so as we bring on new franchisees, are they becoming, is anybody being communicated with this long-term objective, a 10-year objective?
We, we're, we're struggling with how to develop this effectively, but we do think we can do it, but so, as I understand it, it would be applied as an incentive, so any of the commercial haulers could do it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. That was my only question.
Thank you. Seeing no other discussion up here, I'll take it out to the public. Does the public have any comments on this item? Seeing none? Bring it back? Or still seeing no comments up here? We've got a motion and a second, so let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title. Ordinance number 2018-2, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach, granting non-exclusive solid waste franchises to provide solid waste handling services within the city of Newport Beach. Councilmember Avery, thank you. The motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
All right, item number 12, Coron del Mar Fire Station.
Yes, good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, exciting item we bring to you tonight with the award of the bid for the new fire station library. With us tonight is Mark Vakoyevich, our deputy director, city engineer, and he'll be giving you a staff report on this item.
Good evening, Mayor. City councilmembers, we're here tonight to award this construction project, and I'm going to walk through some of the background and the details about the schedule, scope, and cost. So as you know, our Coron del Mar Branch Library and our fire station, they were built in the late 50s, early 60s, and they've been identified for replacement for the last several years based out of our 2014 facility report. And here's an aerial shot. There are two, they're currently two separate buildings that were built at separate times. The library had an expansion that was taking place many years ago as well, too, that, so it was two half-b buildings that put together the existing library. It's right off of Marigold, just north of Coast Highway. And here's the rendering, this is the, the architectural look and feel of the, of the building. It's a combined building. This is the renderings that were presented to the community, the library board, and back to city council back in 2015, before we started the design. It was a team effort on this with Public Works, the Fire Department, and the Library Departments to get this right, because we're talking about a combined building, so we had a lot of community outreach, and many, many meetings with the Board of Trustees for the library as well, too. It's a 10,300-square-foot combined building, so it's a very inefficient use, you know, and then one of the key takeaways here is bringing our fire station to essential facility standards, basically, so it can, it can survive, you know, the criteria for, you know, for emergencies. It has 30 different, 30 parking spaces, many of which are available for the public, the architectural style fits very nicely with the neighborhood, and just some, you know, the community outreach, some of these things that have come out from this, too, like an outdoor reading porch and stroller parking, which would never make it to our list, but as you talk to the community, you learn these things, and, and I think that's going to be a real enhancement to the project. So the Fire Department, we need to move those folks out, and we've already started that construction, so there's temporary living quarters being set up at the Oasis Parking Lot, and we're expected to complete that by April 7th. And then the, the Branch Library, those services are going to be transferred to Central Library with some auxiliary programming that's going to take place at the Community Youth Center, and then also some special services at Oasis. And then we're looking at a groundbreaking of April 10th as a potential date right now, and 15, 14 to 15 months of construction and a grand opening in, in summer of 2019. Again, we talked about the team on the front end, which is the city team, but now we've had to hire all of these, you know, specialty contractors and consultants to build this, and we're recommending you award contracts to TeleQ Construction Management, who is the contractor, and we've had 16 bidders on this project, and they came out on top, and they have some, some great references, we're excited to work with them. GKK Works to assist us in construction management, and then also WLC for design support, and specialty testing, everything from the concrete to the, to the wood, everything needs to be checked out, make sure it's certified and tested, and then everything from utility connections and different vendors to make this thing happen. And here's a slide about our previous expenditures on the project and where we stand today, too. So we invested quite a bit in design and the outreach and all the previous bidding. Our construction costs, including, you know, some contingency, $7.2 million, our relocation efforts, and consultants, and all the specialty items that, that take place here, it's an all-in construction cost number of about $8.8 million. construction cost number of about $8.8 million. And that includes, and the agenda item tonight has the budget amendment in there as well too. The construction costs, it's $620 per square feet. And one of the, it's, these buildings are very expensive these days. And one good news note there, when we bid this project last December, you remember, our recommendation to you was to reject all bids because we did not like the bids we received. And so just to give you a comparison, those bids, that was, those bids were $660 per square foot. So our price today is actually less, and I think we hit it on target, that that was not a good bid back then, and we needed to rebid this. So we're happy with these prices. And again, tonight, we're asking you to approve the SEQA, the plans, and award the construction contract, as well as all the supporting consultant contracts and the budget amendment. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's beautiful. I'd like to move in myself. I'd like to now have any comments from the public? Oh, that's what it says here. Forget this, I guess.
One second.
Mr. Muldoon?
If you want to sit tight.
One second, sorry.
Sorry. Just so we have an idea, based on the square footage dollar amount you just quoted that we originally rejected, what would that total cost have been versus what we're paying now?
The previous project had a little different format. We bid that with the Mariners Fire Station Apparatus Bay. So to divide it out into apples and oranges, I have the number here, just a second, that cost was about $6.8 million back then for an average cost of 660 square feet, $660 per square foot.
Compared to what are we now?
Compared to now, our cost is about $620 per square foot.
Total?
Total, yes.
Okay.
Not, excuse me, not total, but for the, just for the construction of the building alone.
Okay. So are you able to give me two numbers, two total numbers?
You mean for the all-in cost?
Yes. Scott, what is it? Okay. So 6.8 to down to 6.3.
So construction cost only before was $660 only per square foot. Now it's at 620. All in, I don't have that number, but we can...
Okay. So there's a $500,000 savings, it sounds like?
Yes. Oh, yeah. Yeah, exactly. From the last time we bid it, correct.
And just so that everyone knows how seriously, I know we had a subcommittee on this, how seriously they took it. They explored other locations, correct?
That's correct.
And what, could you just give a quick summary of what that entailed and what we decided?
Sure. We looked at several different locations, again, too. We did a last-time check. We talked to different property owners and looked at the feasibility of those locations and the cost and the availability of the land. And we determined none of those were feasible or cost-effective at the time. And so we came back to this location and this project, and that's how we have this rebid.
And do you recall what the budget money was allocated from?
It came out of our facilities financing program, which is, you know, it's funded by developer impact fees and our savings account for replacing facilities, yeah.
And I believe in this particular case, it was from Uptown Newport. Is that sound accurate?
I don't know particularly.
Sorry, I'm wrinkling my eyes. We have a pot with a bunch of spigots. One of the spigots would have been Uptown Newport. There's also a general fund spigot that supplies this. So it's kind of hard to say which dollars went where, because it all fills up the pot.
But how much did we get from Uptown Newport?
More than this, I think.
It's about 18.
Yeah, certainly overwhelms the cost of this.
So I was under the impression that the subcommittee on this project did an excellent job. Staff did a great recommendation in having us reject the first bid. So thank you very much. We have a large savings, and a large portion of that Uptown Newport development fees were to go, in fact, to the specific project. That was my understanding. So I wanted everyone in the audience to be aware that it was taken very seriously. We showed a lot of efficiency, and some of my colleagues think did an excellent job in overseeing the process. They know who they are. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hurdman?
While I'm going to vote in favor of this project, I do have some questions about the financing of it. I do recall at the beginning of this fiscal year, and Dave, I've spoken to you about this already, that your recommendation was to hold off on this project because of our unfunded liability and other indebtedness that the city has. And I'm needing an explanation as to how and why this whole thing has come about. I don't need it here right now, but I am going to, I am going to ask for an explanation for the funding of this and how it came about. And it has increased by, in fact, almost $897,000. So that's just, that's all I want.
I would be happy to try and answer that question, Mr. Hurdman, just because I, just because you've raised it. If we were to go back a year in the goal-setting session, I was more concerned than I am today, although I still have some concern, but much more concerned about the approach to our unfunded liability. And your council has really taken a strong approach to that. $9 million a year, every year. We're able to project another nine mil, that we can accommodate another $9 million coming into the budget year as additional discretionary payments. No other city that I know of is able to do that. And I wouldn't do any more than that, because then you are sacrificing projects like this one. So I think my recommendation a year ago was more just my inability to foresee the future to today. But I do think the steps that the council has taken, and the economy holding up quite well, and sales tax still holding up quite well, are all things that were more uncertain back then. And I'm comfortable moving forward with this project or making a staff recommendation that we do that.
And were you aware at that time of your recommendation to stall this project that developer fees from Uptown Newport were forthcoming?
Yes, but again, I look at it a little differently, that it's one big pot, and it goes in to support a long-term plan. And so I, to me, I never would tie a project directly to a developer fee from a specific project, because I think that's never been how the FFP has been developed. It's okay to look at it that way. The FFP was developed kind of with those three spigots, though.
Thank you, Dave.
Councilman Pieter, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to take the opportunity to thank staff for working together. I know this has been a long, arduous process, working with the community and coming up with a design that reflect what the community wanted, including the stroller parking. And I just want to let you know that I appreciate it. And I'm very happy that the, I got a little analysis that you prepared earlier, talking about how, you know, Mr. Hurdman's talking about $897,000 over, but that's not really true. That's just the way that we're moving money from budget line item to budget line item. The reality of it is with the CPI, that it's actually right on our budget and what we had allocated for the FPPC facilities plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem O'Neill?
Sure. While we're thanking folks, I just, I also want to thank staff. It's been quite some time. I want to thank the Board of Library Trustees, both the current and the former board, that have spent quite some time interacting with the public. I remember attending a few of those meetings, a couple of them actually in the CDM Library, which was packed. And just, that took some time. And then, of course, community groups like the Friends of the Corona Del Mar Library. This is a long time coming. Looking forward to my vote tonight. And, you know, piggybacking just a little bit on what Councilmember Muldoon was talking about, the facilities financing plan slash program continues to be one of the best things that past councils have done. It really has opened up opportunities for us to continue to not just build new, because I don't think this council has done that yet, but certainly replace old. And you're seeing that with this. You're seeing that with the purchase of the land over in, on Lido for the new fire station. It continues to be something where the community is seeing a regeneration of properties built in the 1950s. And so genuinely excited about the fact that we're able to use, in this particular case, even if we did first-in, first-out approach to life, it would be 100% developer fee money that's coming, frankly, from the airport area to benefit our area of Corona Del Mar, which is an enormous deal. And something we can't forget as we're continuing down the path of discussing the future of our city. And then I'd also like to just point out that I greatly appreciate the fact that we have a construction company that is different from the construction management. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of comments. I just want to piggyback on the congratulatory comments to staff and to, also to the voice of the community that has persistently and passionately fought for, and the rationale, the justification, and the financial commitment that the city would spend for this. And it's a perfect example of your voice being heard. And the community was specifically passionate and determined that there'd be a replacement library and fire station to serve the Corona Del Mar neighborhoods. And I believe after we conclude our public discussion, then we'll have a vote, and we may be very close to seeing that reality. During those discussions, public discussions over the last few years, I have spoken several times, many times, in the context of this library, proposed library, and other capital projects, of the importance of a public-private contribution to making a capital project even better. And I was pleased to learn from staff when I asked the question, how do we allow for contribution from private donations, whether it's for new books, or new tables, or new carpeting in our new library? I was pleasantly surprised to learn that already about $62,000 have been, contributions have come in from members of our community to support our new, specifically for the Corona Del Mar Library. And other fundraising projects are currently being organized by the Friends of the Library and the Library Foundation. So they're already ahead of me by leaps and bounds. And I just want to thank the community for their support and financial commitment and the blood, sweat, and tears that make our community what it is. And I'm very grateful. And just for a procedural item, one last clarification on the facilities financial plan. Just for the community's edification, the monies, as Mr. Kiff had explained, it's a reserve fund. And prior councils created this about 10 years ago, created this reserve fund that is funded by development fees. And they have been, it's a bank account. That money comes in to support new projects, maintaining existing projects, and replacing existing projects. It is a 30-year replace and repair and build plan that really allows the city to not incur debt, to pay as we go, to pay for important capital items. Many cities have to have a bond measure, a revenue bond measure, or whatever, to build a new library or a fire station. And we are fortunate that prior councils have set up the savings plan. Now, the airport area, the Upper Newport Development Agreement, community benefit fees that contributed coincidentally at this time, did replenish those funds into the financial plan. But there were funds there. It's just a good reminder, and I think Mayor Protem O'Neill said this a few meetings back, that as there is a lot of discussion, as we go forward with our new general plan discussion, when it begins, I guess in 2020 or 19, that remind us that not a single park in this city, I think there's 68 parks in the city, not a single park was built with general fund, exclusively with general fund money. It's primarily with development fee money. So development is important, public and private development is important to make this community what it is, and it builds libraries and fire stations. And so thank you, and thank you, staff. Great job. And thank you, community, for your efforts to make our community strong and stronger. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Avery?
Yeah, I won't repeat all the good words of my fellow council folks, but I will say, I think the spigots have been running pretty well, but they won't always run well. And so we're in a good time. And I think the first place we should invest is public safety and then adding benefit to the community. So from my standpoint, I agree with all that, but I also think this is really an appropriate time to do it, because there'll be times when we won't be able to do this kind of thing, in my view. But right now, it's a great time, and it's a sign of a very healthy city, a very healthy partnership between the city and its residents. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, my only comment is ditto of what everyone else said. Great job, staff. Oops. Councilman Muldoon?
Just one last thing. I want to sort of add some color to what the city manager stated. Development fees that we're discussing now that pay for these cannot be used for unfunded pension liability. So although you may have considered that issue, I did not consider that at all. These are two separate issues, as I see it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are there any public comments on this item? Please come up.
Yes, Council. My name is Karen Carlson. I have been a resident here in Corona Del Mar since 1968, and a almost daily, if not least weekly, user of the Corona Del Mar Library these past almost 50 years. I have been passionate. I'm one of the people that Councilman Dixman referenced about this particular project from the very beginning, when we really weren't going to have a library. It was just going to be a new fire station. And I think this is a wonderful example of how a community can pull together and have a wonderful result that seems to meet everyone's needs, because we did talk together and we worked together. And I'd like to particularly comment or commend our Friends of the Corona Del Mar Library Chairman, Joy Brenner, because she was really the ramrod that got this going. And those of you that were at the meetings at the library at the very beginning, you could see how our community felt. And to have this beautiful facility be the final result, I think is something everybody can be very happy about. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
Mayor Tuffield and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. First, since we've heard so much about development fees in the last few minutes, I wanted to remind you that part of the rationale for charging the development fees is to offset the increased burden that the new development places on the city infrastructure. And these fine new folks in Uptown, or wherever they are, are themselves someday likely to want a library of their own, because they're much farther than Corona Del Mar from our central library. And the fees they're paying hopefully will be saved up towards their future needs. Second comment I wanted to make is, it's a little disturbing to hear about the anonymous council committee that seems to have been working on this. What's disturbing about that in this very transparent city, I don't recall the council ever appointing a subcommittee, or that subcommittee ever making a formal report back to the remainder of the council. A third comment I wanted to make has to do with the cost. It is indeed very welcome to see that the cost of this has gone down per square foot. But from what I've heard of other local agencies in Southern California, construction costs have been increasing sharply in the last year or two. So I'm wondering if we can get confirmation that the fact that this construction cost has gone down means that the project being bid now is precisely the same project that was, we heard the bids from in December of 2016? Or the reason the cost is lower, is it been valued, engineered to something less than it was then? Or was there something fundamentally wrong with the bid that we had before, of which we had not this long list of 16, but we had only three bidders? Have we learned anything from what we did wrong with the bid in December of 2016? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for discussion up here. I see Councilman Pieter.
Yeah, I just wanted to correct one thing that Mr. Mosher said. It's, you know, we've got a development agreement with Uptown Newport, and part of the development agreement required them to pay additional fees. These are fees that are over and above These are fees that are over and above mitigation requirements. They don't necessarily bear any impact whatsoever to the impact of, like you said, the infrastructure or the facilities of the city. They are indeed over and above. And the reason that they do it is because they get a development agreement out of the deal, so they have a guaranteed project approval. So they get over and above a normal approval and they pay for it. So it's not like, hey, they owed us the money anyway. No, they didn't. They wanted the development agreement and that was the, the price that they were willing to pay for that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem O'Neill.
Yeah, I'll actually correct one other thing. There was, I agree, there was no formal committee. There was nothing of the sort. In fact, the, I believe that either Mr. Pieter or I, or both, had taken upon ourselves to discuss with staff the question of location, which we reported back into the Corona Del Mar Residents Association, which was subsequently reported back out into the public by, I believe, Ms. Sank. So, nope, no formal committee, Jim. I agree.
All right. Thank you. Is there a motion? Yeah, I'll move approval. All right, we have a motion and a second. Let's vote, please.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right, moving to item number 13, Newport Elementary Playfield.
Yes, again, Mayor, good evening as we get to late hour.
Hold on one minute.
Excuse me.
Just real briefly, I just have to announce that I have a recusal due to personal interest with the school. But I have not participated in any of the discussions. I do not need to leave, but I will not participate. Oh, I do have to leave.
So with the clerks exiting the chambers, we want to get to our featured project here. This is the reconstruction of the Newport Elementary Turf Field. So if you recall, we started this discussion several years ago, 2016, we entered into agreement with the Mesa Unified School District, Newport Mesa Unified School District, to reconstruct their field. This picture on the top, there is the elementary school along the coast, and you can see the green field in the back. This is a very well-used field, both by the school, the community and our own recreational folks. We program on this field. We hold small group classes, summer camps. We do physical education on it. And the community at large uses this field extensively. Over the years, it's become out of disrepair, and you can see a picture there of the field. And the biggest problem here is the blowing sand that comes onto the blacktop and across and makes the field uneven. So the last time, many decades ago, I believe two decades ago, we actually rehabilitated this field. And it's been building up since that point. It becomes a high maintenance cost to try to keep up this field. And so the project is going to address these issues. What we're doing in the project is we're going to be regrading the field and installing new turf. And with it also, we're going to be widening the boardwalk to provide increased separation between the boardwalk users and the children and the players. And that'll be right, as you're familiar with the area, you've got the school to the north, there's a fence right along the beach boardwalk, the 12-foot beach boardwalk, then you go right into the field. We're going to add another six feet onto that to give a little more separation, particularly in the morning that children gather there, they have their bikes there, and people are trying to get by there. So that'll help. We're going to replace the adjacent sidewalk that's on the west side, I believe, that runs from, perpendicular from the boardwalk out to the field. And then we're going to create a 21-inch seat wall that goes around the south side, along the ocean side and both sides towards the school. And that is to help keep the sand from future blowing onto the field and keep a better maintenance of the field. We're also going to be installing water-efficient irrigation systems. And also what the Coastal Commission required us to change the controllers out, too. So there's a little added cost there from the original project. And lastly, we were going to move some of the play equipment that's actually too close to the boardwalk, just to meet safety concerns as part of this, and move that back just several feet. Related to this, I put these items on here because I know one of the items tonight is with our original agreement with the school district, we had a roughly construction cost estimate in mind of $500,000. And it was a donation or requirement the school district put in $250,000, of which they have and we have in our bank account. And the city was going to fund about $250,000 worth of improvements. Fast forward two years, we, we could not make it last summer, we were going to try to do the field last year, but between the complexities of the school schedule and the coastal permitting, we couldn't get the project off, so we had to move into this summer. That did put the construction window out a little, which added a little cost due to escalation. And as I mentioned, from the original scope that we had, we've added a few things as staff went out there and worked with the, the plans that the school district provided from us. They had an original architect that did a complimentary plan for them, which we inherited. And from that, we added on to that to basically capitalize on some efficiencies of scale as we're there. So these costs here, remove the existing access route, and I'll point back here on this one, I can't point, but if you look on that field right in the middle and you look towards the, which would be the audience's left, there's a walkway that goes out there. And that walkway's in pretty disrepair. So we said, well, we're here, why don't we go ahead and replace that? And there's a little small upcharge for that. We were adding a four-inch subdrain between the boardwalk and the field. We've had problems in the past where the irrigation runs down the boardwalk and it puddles there and causes standing water conditions. So we're going to see if we can address that while we're out there. We're also installing a concrete swale, that was that six-foot add to the boardwalk I talked about, to kind of get the water to move out and into a subdrain system. And then there's also some asphalt concrete work that we're going to be working on towards the basketball court area, again, to take care of some low spots and improve the drainage. And lastly, I talked about, we have to relocate a piece of playground equipment so that it falls in the state safe zone. It's too close to the hardscape and we have to move it back. Those are added costs to the original scope. It tallies about $76,000 for this. So again, just keeping that in mind as we move forward with the project award. Real quick on the schedule, it is kind of scheduled tight. Basically, in April, we're going to start the construction, should you award this project tonight. First thing the contractor will do, be putting in the hardscape, the boardwalk and the, and the walls. That'll go over spring break. And then right behind that, we'll do the grading, the construction of the walls, the blacktop work, the drainage irrigation. And we'll have all that done by the end of school. Our hope is that as soon as school's out, we'll sod the field. And then the field will need at least the summer to establish itself. So from July to June, we'll keep everybody off the field, we'll let the turf establish itself. And then we've worked out a deal with the contractor, too. For the next school year, he'll come back and maintain the field, mow it, any broken sprinklers, make sure it's, it's all in good shape throughout, out the entire school year. And at the end of next school year, it'll be turned over back to the school district for maintenance of that. So tonight, we're asking you to award this project to our contractor for $550,000. And looking for any comments and questions on that. That completes our staff report.
All right, great. Mayor Protem O'Neill?
I'll move staff recommendation.
I believe that was leftover from the last.
Oh. I'll move staff recommendation.
I'll second.
All right. Any public comments on this item?
Sorry for jumping the gun earlier. I'm Matt Wiley.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. This equipment here is a little confusing. Can you just take a seat right there real fast while Councilman Muldoon speaks? Sorry.
Third time will be the charm. Sorry about that. Mr. Harp, are you familiar with the lease we have relating to this land?
I am.
Do you remember when it was negotiated?
I do.
What year?
It was just recently renegotiated. It's a couple of years old. It's a 50-year lease with them, though. I don't have the specific date.
Them being?
The school district.
Newport Mesa?
Yes.
And what was the consideration for us allowing them to use this property?
Originally, it was proposed to charge them rent, but instead of charging them rent, they agreed to basically maintain and improve the field and take care of all those type of costs, so there'd be no cost to the city.
So in this situation, it looks like they're providing $250,000, which is part of that amount, to give them that. But I think that the $363,000 from the Thailand's funds could be better served for harbor use in other locations. And I think the school district has an obligation and plenty of money. They're spending, they're buying new fields throughout the school district to take care of their legal obligation. And that this is not the best use, in my opinion, for the funds, but I certainly understand why the parents are supportive. So I see both sides, but I will not be voting to support this. Thank you.
And if I could, Council, I'm sorry, clarify one point. One of the items tonight we're asking is to switch out the Thailand funds that was originally programmed for the field and replace it with oceanfront encroaching money. This is money we get from the oceanfront encroachments that needs to be used for public improvements in the beach area. So there, there is that correction. We won't be using Thailand's for this project, should you approve the recommended action.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dixon.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yes, I was going to make that correction as well. This is coming from the oceanfront improvements from the residents who have encroached on the public lands. And this goes into a fund, and this, these funds have been collecting and will be used for the playground. I'm delighted that the Newport Mesa School District has contributed. And I hope during, once the project is finished and you do your budget reconciliation, that those, any remaining 50-50 funds that are not related to the city's specific benefit, I hope that we, we even that out, because that was the original agreement. But I want to also commend, I know Mr. Wiley's going to be speaking, third time's a charm, but another fabulous example in our community of residents who care passionately to make our community stronger and for our children first and foremost. And maybe Mr., I don't want to steal your thunder, but I probably will. In a letter that he wrote to council, and of course, I've been talking with Mr. Wiley for several years now, he cited the fact that his interest in this project and his support and leadership in seeing this project through fruition started when your youngest child was in kindergarten and that child is now a senior at Newport Harbor High School. So patience is a virtue. And the children, I'm down there quite often and I see how it is a rugged piece of grass area. And it's, we're not talking new fancy, new playground equipment. This is just really new sod, new irrigation system, a protective wall to keep the sand from blowing. So it's very simple and straightforward. And one other comment I wanted to make about the citizen and resident and parental involvement, I believe, if my memory serves me correctly, that you folks actually did the coastal development permit with the Coastal Commission, or you put that whole application together? Is that correct?
The city pushed it through, but we, we did the initial plans and then kind of passed it on to the city. And the city really was...
But you got it started. And you really, prior to our council, you really were pushing it. So again, patience is a virtue. Thank you. I'm glad that resident funds that go into specifically the oceanfront encroachment program are paying for this, as well as the Newport Unified School District. So that's, we're very creative in getting source of our funding for our capital projects. So thank you, staff. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem O'Neill.
I'll just, I'll piggyback a little bit on what Councilman Muldoon said. And I'll just say that, you know, at a time when a lot of our residents are being told to stay off the improved tracks and the city's being potentially requesting, or asked, asked to pay for someone to monitor our residents, who are paying through their property taxes for the, for the facilities that are now too nice, apparently, for our residents to actually go on, it's a little bit frustrating, frankly, to see the, the split here coming from the city versus the, versus Newport Mesa Unified. I'd ask publicly for Newport Mesa Unified School District to step up for its financial obligations on its own fields and on its own locations and properties. So I, I would echo both of the, both the speakers and say, we've got to figure out a way to do a budget reconciliation here, because I didn't see any city-specific costs, even the 76,000, $73,000, $76,000 in that slide came entirely because of the field itself. And so that's all spillover costs that would be borne by, certainly in a private citizen context, let alone the fact that we're working together. So I'd love to see the, the split be a bit more even across the board. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no more comments from up here, I'd like to bring it out to the public. Are there any public comments on this?
And just briefly, Councilmember Muldoon asked when the contract was entered, too. It was the 10th of February 2015 with Newport Mesa Unified School District was the day of the contract.
I hope you appreciated it and show up with 30 kids this time, as we did last time. So I, I really just wanted to thank the, the staff particularly for, and just to compliment everybody on how much help everybody gave to get this project. This was dreamed up in a, in a garage over a couple beers by a couple guys before me even. And the, we, we strong-armed, we think very much so, to get the, the school district to pony up and put a bunch of money into this. Otherwise, I think this would just sit there without any changes to it. So we're, we were very pleased with what we did get out of the, out of the school district. That was a lot of work to get to that point. We've gotten this project to this point where we hope it gets over the goal line. And I know you probably have to hold your nose a little bit on the way the allocation of these funds is here at the tail end of this thing. Hopefully, the larger goal of not waiting any longer to get a field that really is in crummy condition, finished, completed, so that the kids at that school, who are all citizens of Newport Beach, can use that field. And if you've been out there on the weekends, it's a very used field on the weekends as well by visitors and residents. So thank you very much. Again, thank you, staff has been fantastic to work with on this thing. And I hope, hope the vote goes favorably. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other speakers, please?
Mayor Duffield and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Regarding the equity of the cost sharing, I don't see it in the report. I don't recall if it was mentioned when the lease was negotiated. It would seem useful to know what fraction of the year, how many daylight hours this area is available for non-school use versus the fraction of the year that it's available exclusively for school use? Whether that is close to 50-50 or what that number is, I have no idea myself.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Well, I have to say that of all the schools in the, probably the world, when you ask yourself if you went there, so where'd you go to school? Well, that'd be the beach on the surf. You say what? Yeah, our beach, our school was basically on the beach. It's pretty fantastic. All right, I'm going to go ahead. I don't see any other comments up here. Move the item. Can I get a second?
I think we're good.
Okay. Great. I didn't see that. Let's vote.
Motion carries 6-1 with Councilmember Muldoon voting no.
Madam Clerk? Well, I'll just go, are there any motions for reconsideration? Oh, here she is. Go ahead.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Any, don't see any? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.